All right, let's try this. Have a loud voice. I don't want to blow you guys away. Chairman Smith, President McPhee, Honorable Trustees, staff and guests, I'm Paul Martin. And ever since I pulled myself up on the rails of my crib to look out the bedroom window for the first time at this campus across the street, MTSU has been a part of my life. For more than seven decades, as a student at campus school or at the university, a member of the foundation's board, or active in volunteer positions, my passion, like your philanthropy, has been dedicated and revolved around supporting MTSU in its quest to become the best LGI in our state. I've known every president since 1950, half the folks whose names are enshrined on our buildings and have served as a trustee to the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, the accreditation body for MTSU, and 850 other institutions of higher learning. Oh, I watch your must-see TV meetings, yet I bring you congratulations to you and President McPhee for MTSU's incredible growth and accomplishment. Twenty years ago, Dr. McPhee visited my brother Lee and I to discuss a vision for a permanent home of the Honors College. He articulated clearly his desire to move MTSU to the forefront of Tennessee's higher education system by focusing on enhancing the academic reputation of the institution and improving the quality of our students. He convinced us, we wrote the check for Tennessee's first honors college building, and Dr. McPhee has never wavered from the vision he articulated that night. His fidelity to that vision and the success in implementing it is not just my opinion. MTSU has been repeatedly recognized in many national rankings, including the Princeton Review, Forbes, and as one of the country's top universities. And just over one week ago, MTSU became a Tier Two Carnegie Research Institution, an achievement realized by only 3% of the nation's roughly 2,500 institutions of higher learning. Congratulations to this board and Dr. McPhee and Dr. Butler. The administrative staff enthusiastically embraces this vision. Having worked with many of those, he is attracted to serve here. I know that they are empowered to lead by Dr. McPhee, their job satisfaction is high, and their dedication to students is unequaled. A perfect example is MTSU's spectacular success in handling the COVID crisis. Academic and administrative working groups had us ready because this board and Dr. McPhee were proactive. He didn't wait. MTSU's handling of the crisis was the ideal for the state and received national recognition when our university was invited to the White House to share its successful leadership formula with the nation. The Tennessee taxpayers' recognition of our emergence as Tennessee's preferred LGI is confirmed by the billion-plus dollars spent on campus facilities. But there is an intangible leadership quality that I value above the bricks and mortar. It's the unexpected humanity we might overlook, but to those touched by it, it changes lives. All of us have seen Liz and Sidney open their homes to students from areas impacted by natural disasters, offering them a meal, someone to talk to, and an assurance that they are not alone. I've met students who chose MTSU because upon meeting our president, they knew that their success was his primary goal. And I know a president whose central theme is a commitment to the success of every student. The newly discovered national attention directed to providing for the needs of our minority populations and those who are economically disadvantaged is old news at MTSU. It's been my consistent observation over 20 years that President McPhee and his wife are passionate about helping students in need and are highly effective in their personal efforts at bringing others, myself included, to the table to join them in fundraising efforts like our local MLK scholarship program. They are making a difference. I add my congratulations to the local NAACP's recognition of President and First Lady McPhee's efforts in expanding opportunities for undeserved students. Whether defined by age, race, their military service to our country, even those that come from other countries, MTSU has maintained the resources that allow every student an opportunity to flourish and succeed. I well know the challenges that higher education faces from SACS and can tell you, I assess MTSU's results from that perspective. We are lucky to have the administrative team led by Dr. McPhee. Thank you very much for your time. Go Big Blue!
Next on the agenda is the approval of last board meeting's minutes. Are there any additions, subtractions, or suggestions on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest a correction to the minutes, please.
Sir? Floor's yours.
Thank you. Earlier speaker, Braxton Coleman, read a letter from Reese Smith Jr., but he didn't read the email that we received from the director of the Gore Center, and I'm going to butcher his name, but Louis Curriodus. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Kerry Gudis.
Thank you, thank you. So I apologize for that. So he provided to Dr. McPhee, President McPhee, a context of this, a cover email, and also a detailed memorandum about this. And additionally, Dr. McPhee and the director shared that with the board back on December 22 of last year. So I'd like to read this into the record, so it'd be a part of the official record, and also put in context the letter that the gentleman read earlier. So the cover email says, "Dear members of the MTSU Board of Trustees, I am the director of the Albert Gore Research Center here at MTSU. I am also a historian and member of the history faculty. In my capacity as custodian of the papers of Senator Albert Gore Sr., I composed the attached memorandum identifying misrepresentations of a letter contained in the papers of Senator Albert Gore Sr. that were made by Dr. Jewel Nguyen and her presentation to the board at the December 8, 2021 meeting. I sent this memo to Dr. McPhee at my own initiative this morning. Dr. McPhee has asked that I share this memo with you," you being the board, who this is addressed to. "I hope this helps set the record straight on this document. Thank you for your service leading our fine university. Very best regards from the director." And so the memorandum itself, also dated December 22, 2021, related to Reese Smith Jr.'s letter of October 3, 1962. The memorandum reads, "The Reese Smith Jr. letter to Senator Albert Gore Sr. In the papers of Senator Gore at the Albert Gore Research Center has been misrepresented by Speaker in the most recent meeting of the MTSU Board of Trustees. An image of the letter is appended to this memo." I want to set the record straight. That is the director speaking. I want to set the record straight. By way of qualifications, I'm not only a professor of history and director of the Gore Center at MTSU, I also served for seven years as Director of the Center for Oral History and Cultural Heritage at the University of Southern Mississippi. The leading oral history archive for the study of the Mississippi Civil Rights Movement, I'm a recognized authority on the Mississippi Civil Rights Movement. At the December 8, 2021 meeting of the MTSU Board of Trustees, Dr. Jewel Nguyen claimed to quote from Mrs. Smith's letter by making this statement, and the statement reads, "Why the MTSU baseball field is named after a known segregationist who wrote a letter to Senator Albert Gore asking when will they get," quote the N-word, not going to say that, "out of Ole Miss, and please pardon my minacure, but he wrote it, I didn't. First, nowhere in the letter is the indicated racial epithet used. That is simply a fabrication. Second, Reese Smith is not a known segregationist. This, too, is a fabrication. This letter does not advocate for or defend segregation. Mr. Smith expresses his concerns about the deployment of troops in Mississippi and the lack of confidence in the judgment of the then U.S. Attorney General, Robert F. Kennedy. He raises issues about the use of force and the best means in forcing compliance of federal court orders, and at a higher level, the best means of achieving integration. Historical context is important. Smith penned the letter three days after deadly riots rocked the University of Mississippi. These and other events in the civil rights movement at the time sparked a national debate over the best means of dismantling segregation in the South and promoting integration. Mr. Smith is participating in this debate. In fact, Smith clearly expresses support for integration. He says so in the letter by concluding, 'Only time, tolerance, and sound judgment can accomplish integration in Mississippi.'" Indeed, Smith offers his low opinion of Mississippi's segregationist leadership by further writing, "You can take a mule to water, but you can't make him drink." While Mississippi, of course, is the mule, this is clearly not meant as a compliment. So he concludes this memorandum by saying, "I hope this offers some clarification, correction, and context about this historical document." And I won't read the letter since it's already been read earlier by Mr. Coleman, so I would like to suggest the minutes reflect that this is in addition to those minutes, please.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Further discussion?
So this is a point of clarification. Secretary Floyd, is that something that is acceptable for those minutes, or is that something that needs to be reflected in these minutes?
I think it would be more appropriate to be reflected in these minutes, that the mail that is referenced will be documented with regards to these minutes. I think the comments that Trustee Boyd made will reflect the clarification. In the letter for itself, we'll speak to the clarification as to the comments that were made in our previous meeting.
Thank you.
Does that suit you?
Sure.
The second? Okay. Brother, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. You think we'll get an apology from the lady that made those obvious lies and remarks? That's what I thought. Next, Trustee Wright.
Right.
Academic Affairs.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Academic Affairs Student Life and Athletics Committee met on March 15, 2022. The committee approved the minutes from its November 9, 2021 meeting. Today, I would like to present two action items for the board's consideration. First, a request for approval of two new academic degree programs, a Bachelor of Science in Public Writing and Rhetoric and a Master of Science in Supply Chain Management, both presented by Provost Mark Burns. In accordance with University Policy 251, approval of all academic programs, units, and modifications states all academic actions that require review and approval by THEC must be approved by the Board of Trustees. The committee unanimously approved the new degree programs. The second item for consideration by the committee was a request for approval of two honorary degrees. University Policy 316, awarding honorary degrees, states that the president must recommend nominees for honorary degrees to the Board of Trustees for approval. President McPhee recommends to the Board of Trustees Bill Haslam, the former governor of the state of Tennessee, and Philip Edward Brave Davis, Prime Minister of the Bahamas, to receive honorary doctorate degrees at the May commencement ceremonies. And the committee also unanimously approved these two honorary degrees. Informational items before the committee included the annual report of academic program actions, a fraternity and sorority life update, an update on the Athletics Build Blue Project, and presentation by members of the Faculty Senate. So, Mr. Chairman and Trustees, these materials outlining the committee's actions were available for review prior to this meeting and are in your board notebooks, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Chairman. Do I have a motion to approve the actions of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being made and second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, Trustee Delay. Audit.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Audit and Compliance Committee met March 15, 2022. The committee approved the minutes from its November 9, 2021 meeting. At the meeting, there were no action items brought before the committee. Informational items included: Report of Conflict of Interest Disclosures for 2021; Review of President's Statement of Disclosures of Interest for 2022; Report on Compliance with Public Records Policy; Results of External Reviews Including: The Comptroller of the Treasury Financial and Compliance Audit Report for the year ending June 30, 2021; and the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury NCAA Agreed Upon Procedures Applied to the Athletic Programs Statement of Revenue and Expenses for the year ending June 30, 2021; and the Quarterly Report Results of Internal Audit Reports. There were no audit findings or reportable issues with the audit reports. The public meeting of the committee adjourned, and the committee went into executive session to discuss audits and internal investigations. Mr. Chairman and Trustees, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Kobolik, you're next.
All right, thank you, Chairman Smith. The Executive and Governance Committee met on March 15, 2022, and the committee approved the minutes from its November 9, 2021 meeting. Today, I'd like to present two action items for the board's consideration. The first item before the committee was a request for approval of the revisions to the institutional mission statement and mission profile as presented by Associate Provost Mary Hofswely. The committee approved these revisions unanimously. The second agenda item was a recommendation from the Finance Chair, Jacobs, concerning the president's contract and included a three-year extension of Dr. McPhee's contract as university president to December 10, 2026, substantially maintaining all terms and conditions of the current contract. The one revision to the contract where the president will be, the one revision to the contract was where the president will be automatically included in any general salary increase for university employees without specific board approval. This increase in base salary would occur at the same time as it does for all other university employees. The committee approved this recommendation unanimously as well. Mr. Chairman and Trustees, materials outlining the action items before us was made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
Would you like to put that in form of a motion?
No.
Sure. We don't have a motion yet, but, I mean, let's go ahead and get one.
So I will move to adopt the two action items.
I will second that.
Okay.
Is there any way we can vote on those individually? Mr. Secretary?
That's not the motion.
The motion was to approve as recommended, and it was recommended as a complete package.
So I have two questions. One, which in the documentation, we changed this statement that says, "MTSU attracts, welcomes, and supports a diverse, a large, four-time student population with significant numbers of pale-eligible, first-generation, non-traditional, and," it used to say minority students, "but now it says underrepresented." And just trying to figure out what that... Am I reading that incorrectly?
I don't think so. I'm not sure.
Well, I think, from my perspective, the way I read that when that was included, it was to not eliminate minority students from that particular area, but to also recognize that, as you pointed out at one point, Trustee Freeman, that there is an issue with poor people in general, regardless of their racial or ethnic background. So I think that the intention was to be more inclusive in terms of the individuals to whom there is a focus, or upon whom there is a focus.
So is there a way we can say minorities and poor students?
Well, but then you're saying, so are there other areas that might be potentially underrepresented as well? So for a long time, women were underrepresented. And so, you know, one could argue in certain areas, women continue to be underrepresented.
I agree.
And so, my thinking, my read of that, now, that's just one person's opinion, is, what we're saying here is, we want to make sure that we are inclusive of all those who are underrepresented. That would be my translation of that.
Okay. As a minority, I feel differently.
As a female, I feel differently.
Yes.
Is there another question? Do you have another question?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Darrell, are you not wanting to include sexual orientation as well?
That's true.
You want to simply include minorities?
Well, I was, we could include minorities and others. I mean, that's a possibility. For me, to strike out minority just feels like, as a minority, it feels like that we're moving, we're removing an emphasis.
So perhaps there's a way to be inclusive, because I understand your point, so, but I'm not the draftsman.
Okay.
But what I would suggest is if there, and I don't know if the person who is responsible for preparing the edits would agree with me, but it's underrepresented populations, including but not limited to minorities, gender, sexual orientation, you know, financial status, something like that, which would be an including but not limited to.
It appears to me the way it's written includes everybody, and...
That is underrepresented.
If we change it, then we'll have left out someone.
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, is one way to address this could be to say, "underrepresented, including but not limited to," and then identifying certain categories that are perhaps more obvious than others. Again, gender, minor...
Would you accept that as an amendment to what you...
I would be fine with that.
Would the person that seconded that...
Trustee Freeman, would you be okay with that?
I'd be fine with that. And then, the reason why I ask...
Hold on just a minute. Did you seconded that?
I'm happy to...
No, did you second that?
No, I did not.
Well, who seconded it?
I did not.
The original motion was seconded by Trustee Delay.
I'm happy to amend to include...
Including but not limited to, underrepresented.
Amendment. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I apologize. I want to make sure I have the exact language that you are proposing to substitute or include.
I'm going to turn to Vice Chair.
So, Trustee Freeman, can you read the language that was of concern to you, please?
"A large, four-time student population with significant numbers of pale-eligible, first-generation, non-traditional," and it now reads, "underrepresented students versus and minority students."
And "underrepresented students, including but not limited to," based on race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, included but not, including but not limited to, and then adding those.
And, Chris, you had mentioned financial status.
Financial status, yes.
Does that suit everybody?
Steve, where are we? I'm lost. Where is this? Where are we referring to? I'm lost in our documentation.
It's in the...
Can you refer to a page or something?
It's in the institutional mission statement and mission profile.
Okay.
So let's, we can go to that.
Executive and Governance tab.
Can you reference which page?
Yeah, it's a...
There's a red line.
Okay, thank you.
There's no page numbers, but it's under Executive and Governance Committee, and then it's three pages in.
Three pages in? Okay.
There's a red line version and a final...
There you go.
Everybody, let's see, suit everybody. Motion being made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, opposed.
Okay.
You don't like my change?
Well, I think there's two things in your, in the motion. One is a contract, and one is this.
Oh, okay, I see.
And I don't agree with the...
Well, I have, excuse me, for clarification, point of order here. From parliamentary standpoint, there needs to be, first, be a motion on the amendment, and then from there, we'll go back to the main motion as...
Thanks for the, thanks for the correct, for the...
As amended. So I want to make sure we do this appropriately.
I accept that. You're exactly right. Let's have a motion on the amendment to the original.
So can I just, maybe, maybe I can help with this, just for the purposes of transparency here. What I'm hearing here is that there is an objection to bundling the two action items together. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
So for the, for the purposes of transparency and making sure that it's clear what the issues are, what the debate is about, I would be comfortable with separating the two motions, or the two action items into separate motions. Would that be possible?
Yes.
So may I...
You just made the motion to separate the two action items.
Yes, that would be the first step.
The other discussion, just, we'll worry about that later.
Right. So the first item would be, I would like to withdraw my motion.
And the second's withdrawn?
And then the second...
Trustee Delay?
Second will be withdrawn.
Okay, and now the motion is to separate the two. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Pam's second said. All in favor of separating the two? Say aye.
Aye.
Let's vote on the first.
Mr. Chairman, I was just told by staff that part of the issue of listing on the mission statement that SACS has some requirements that needs to be considered, and so we'd like our SACS liaison, Dr. Hofswely...
Would it be appropriate to get a motion, and then we'll let that be part of the discussion?
Sure.
So, we got two action items.
Right.
I'll vote one at a time. And the first is institutional mission statement and mission profile. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion being made and seconded, discussion. This president has discussion, he'd like to...
Yes, Dr. Hofswely?
President McPhee, thank you, trustees. I will come up.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Certainly. My name is Mary Hofswely, and I am the Associate Provost for Strategic Planning and Partnerships, as well as the university's SACS COC Institutional Liaison. Also, I was part of the discussion in the university's planning committee that led to this revision of the institutional mission profile, which is a bit separate from our mission statement, but we are required by THEC every year to review and update, revise, as the university deems necessary, this institutional mission profile. I will, to comment directly, Trustee Freeman, to your concerns, the committee members felt that the designation here was not inclusive of all possible members of the university community who might need to be afforded not just a welcome, but also support by the university once they are here. And so we use the term "underrepresented," which is an accepted term for inclusive, including all people who might not be represented properly in relation to our communities here at the university. And so it addresses and includes categories that we cannot explicitly ask students, or faculty, or staff to disclose to us. You know, we do not ask our students about their income, for example. And so we use the term "pale-eligible" as an indicator of students in financial need. And "underrepresented students," that would include all of the categories that might need to be protected and supported here at the university, but about which we do not have any data about, you know, that would identify specific students. And so I think it's meant to be more inclusive. It's not meant to say, oh, we're going to set aside one group or multiple groups... It's not meant to say, oh, we're going to set aside one group of, or multiple groups of people, but rather that we are looking at all groups who would potentially encounter discrimination or a lack of support if we were not being aware of these issues here on campus, which I think means that we're, we are trying to work towards some of the goals, some of the shared goals.
Thank you. Does that-
Yeah, I think, I think trustee Cabalier put in a-
Well, I guess that would be my question, doctor. Would it be problematic from the perspective of sort of the powers that be, that to say, underrepresented, including but not limited to, and then identifying several categories to include a reference to minority, gender, sexual orientation, financial need?
I am actually going to defer, if I may, to our Equity and Compliance Officer, Christie Sigler, because it is illegal.
Introduce her.
No, and that's why, that's why I'm asking, because I don't, I don't want to create a situation where the university is at odds with the accrediting organizations.
Certainly. So I'm Christie Sigler, Assistant to the President for Institutional Equity and Compliance. And I, I am on board with what Dr. Hossweli was just explaining, and I understand that need for everyone to feel represented in the language that we use in our documentation, because people are going to look at that and want to make sure that, that they see themselves in what we're saying. But the use of that word, underrepresented, is meant to be more inclusive? The issue with the particular language that, that has been presented as a possible amendment is that we can't ask people what their sexual orientation is. So it's nice to say that we're including individuals with a variety of sexual orientations, gender identities, all those things. And, and we certainly want that to be part of what we do. We just can't ask people how they identify for those things. And so there's not really a way to measure, are we, you know, actually achieving what it is that we're saying in that statement? So we can say, we want to be representative of, you know, as an example, sexual orientation. There's no way for us to adequately measure that, because those aren't things that we can ask about, you know, in the, in the same way that we ask for people to identify their own race, you know, and, and other factors that are protected, as far as we look at for equity and compliance. Does that make sense?
So are we happy with your motion?
May I raise a question?
I, I understand what you're saying, but I guess my question is, we're not saying here in this particular language, and I don't, I don't want to be argumentative about this. I just want to make sure that I understand.
No, no, I want to be clear.
The point being that we're not asking people here to self-identify. What we're saying here is that the university supports, okay, underrepresented students, including but not limited to those who identify as, by, by their sexual orientation, by their religious beliefs, by their financial situation, by their gender, by their minority status. So I mean, I, I don't think we're asking them to identify in this language. I think what we're simply saying is that the university supports these underrepresented groups, which include but are not limited to these categories.
Okay.
Trustee delay, you have a question?
Mad offer, after listening to Dr. Hossweli and, and Dr. Sigler, that I think we might have made this more complicated. The word underrepresented may be a much more inclusive and accurate description. Upon reflection, if we begin to delineate, do we not need to think through every delineation? Could be handicapped, could be different types. My concern is that by trying to recraft specific lists of potentially underrepresented, we're going to leave someone out.
Well, that's my, my point is to say, including but not limited to. That's the reason for that particular phrase. But, you know, obviously I defer to the, you know, the, the broader wisdom here. I was just trying to address a potential concern that was raised by trustee.
Yes, sir.
So the re, being the only minority on this board, the reason why I wanted to keep the word minority, I'm sorry, sorry. One more. The second minority on this board, the, the, I think the largest minority population at MTSU are African-Americans. Is that correct, Dr. McPhee? The largest population of minorities?
The largest, is that what you're asking?
That's correct.
Yes. The largest population of minority, the largest minority population at MTSU are African-Americans. Now, we heard Ms. Singh talk about her, the possibility of her son coming here. Our minority population at MTSU, our African-American population at MTSU is declining. In 2017, when, in fall of 2017, we had forty-two hundred African-American students here. In the fall of 2021, we were down to about thirty-two hundred. So I want to keep an emphasis on how we assist minorities, African-Americans, in doing better in enrolling African-American students here to, to turn around our enrollment decline. So I want, whatever we can to do to have an emphasis on minorities, so that they can thrive here, they can be here. So I don't want to-
That change in language does that?
I think so.
Your comments are noted. Are there any?
If I may, sir, just to be clear.
Only if you ask a question. How about that?
Could we use the language LGBT plus community when we're referring to-
I'll take who we can debate the language for, for another hour and a half. I think that what language has been proposed is, is fine, and I think the language we're adding is redundant and unnecessary. But I only got one vote, but I think we need to, we're not here to debate the language. I mean, we're, we're happy to, but we've had one shot at the thing, and if somebody wants to, if you want to make a motion with another shot at it, fine. And I appreciate your work, but you can't make a motion.
Well aware, sir.
So we have a motion that's been made. It has not been amended.
So, so that's, if the motion's made with the underrepresented word?
The motion has been made is what's written in, in our stuff.
The motion pending reflects what was approved before the committee.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
And it's been seconded. Does somebody want to amend that, or do we want to vote on that? Flip a coin or do whatever.
I'll call the question.
Motion's been called. All in favor of the motion? Let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
The next part of, we separated the two, and the next part is president's contract. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Have a second. Discussion?
I apologize. Who was that second? Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
So noted. Trustee Jacobs, wake up over there.
I'm awake. Trying to follow. Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on March 15th, 2022. The committee approved the minutes from its November 9, 2021 meeting. Today, I'd like to present three action items for the board's consideration. The first item was a request for approval of the permanent appointment of Assistant to the President for Community Engagement and Inclusion by President McPhee. Following a national search, Dr. McPhee recommended the appointment of Dr. Monica Smith as Assistant to the President for Community Engagement and Inclusion. The committee unanimously approved this appointment. Next, Vice President Thomas presented a revision to Policy 611, Financial Performance Review. The policy revision provides that the Composite Financial Index, or CFI, will no longer be submitted to the board as an annual informational item. Instead, individual ratios and overall CFI score will be compared with other LGIs provided to external agencies requiring submission, such as the Department of Education, and used to assess whether any revisions to the budget need to be made. The policy was revised by the committee to state individual metrics requiring revisions to the budget also be presented with the budget recommendations. The policy included in your materials reflect this change. The committee unanimously approved this change to Policy 611. The last action item put before the committee was the amended capital disclosures for fiscal year 21-22. A new disclosure was added for the Phillips Bookstore Improvement Project. Three informational items were presented to the committee and included. An update on the government, governor's budget and legislative budget hearings, an update on federal stimulus funding, and a presentation by members of the faculty senate. Mr. Chairman and trustees, the material outlining the action by this committee were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebook. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Do you make the motion to approve those?
I will.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, motion being made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Smith is here. Well, my notes say she, would you like to say a few words? Certainly not necessary, but we'd like to hear a few, a few.
President McPhee, Board of Trustees, MTSU campus and community, I am very honored to be here, standing before you today. For me, standing here represents more than three decades of work in these areas of community engagement and inclusion. Work that has been long grounded in the powerful words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, when he was speaking to the 1965 graduating class of Oberlin College in my home state of Ohio. And Dr. King said, "All life is interrelated. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality, tied together in a single garment of destiny. What affects one directly affects us all indirectly." Those are the words and the spirit that has guided my work, and it will continue to guide my work, as I'm excited to work with this committed team of dedicated professional higher education leaders, under the time-tested and proven leadership of President Sidney McPhee. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good.
Dr. McPhee, do you have closing remarks?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have my president's report that I would like to give to the board. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to update the board on matters at the university since our last meeting. First, as we're approaching the end of this academic year, we are developing a clearer picture of the upcoming fall application and admissions activity. But before I update you on our fall '22 projections, I want to share just some historic factual database information regarding enrollment in the state and the nation. It is important to note that the overall number of Tennessee public high school graduates enrolling in LGIs and UT University has dropped from 15,402 in 2012 to 14,091 in 2020. That is a reduction of 8.5%. During the same time, the number of Tennessee public high school graduates choosing any of the LGIs dropped by 12.5%. In addition, Tennessee enrolled the first class of Tennessee Promise students receiving free community college tuition in fall of 2015. And since that time, all four-year institutions are recruiting against the offer of two years of community college at no cost, no tuition. The COVID pandemic, a reality, 2019 through 2022, negatively affected students' enrollment across the state of Tennessee and the nation. Community colleges were especially hard-hit. In most cases, many of the community colleges saw a double-digit decrease despite the advantage of free tuition that is offered under the Tennessee Promise. And I think I sent to you all an article that just came out today from the Board of Regents that showed the significant decline in enrollment in the community colleges that resulted in cut in personnel. Good news, MTSU has held its place as the number-one destination of new transfer students in the state of Tennessee for well more than one decade. In 2011, the MTSU market share of all new transfer students enrolling at any public university in the state was 22.97%. In the fall of 2020, that market share was holding strong at 22.20%. UTK currently falls second in the market share of new transfer student at 17.47%. In the fall of 2019, MTSU posted a 14% increase in our freshman class, and we have shown increases in the number of new freshmen three of the last five years. Every year in the last decade, MTSU has continued to hold its ranking as second only to UTK in the number of new freshmen enrolled among all LGIs and UT schools, even with the declining enrollment that you have heard. Now, as you can see from the next slide, Ms. Edgar, if you can put that up, in fall of 2019, we experienced the largest percentage increase in the freshman class of all Tennessee public institutions at 14.5%. The following year, after the pandemic, MTSU experienced a minus 5.6% decrease in the entering freshman class, and you can see all the other institutions up there. That same year, six of the nine public institutions experienced a freshman decrease, likely due to the effects of COVID pandemic. Now, this chart here is important, because it shows the net result of those changes over two-year period. Overall, in that two-year period of fall 2019 and fall 2020, MTSU experienced a net increase of a total of 8% over our fall 2018 first-time freshman headcount. That net increase over the two-year period was second highest of all Tennessee public institution, behind only TSU. Overall, in the two-year period of fall 2019 and fall 2020, MTSU experienced a net increase of total of 8% over the fall 2018 first-time freshman headcount. That net increase over the two-year period was the second highest of all Tennessee public institution, again, just behind TSU. Now, this chart shows that MTSU continues to enroll the second-highest number of freshmen every year, and has been in that position since 2011. That color that I don't like to refer to is the orange up there. That's UTK. Let me wrap up this portion of my report by saying that MTSU continues to experience steady increases in the average high school GPA and the average ACT score of all entering freshman class. In fall of 2014, the average ACT of entering freshman class was 22.12. In fall of 2021- In fall of 2021, it was the ACT score of 22.87. In 2014, the average high school GPA entering freshman class was 3.42, and in '21, the GPA was 3.59. Now, let me just give you a brief update on the applications and admissions for the fall of 2022. Members of the board, our new freshman numbers continue to be strong. Our transfer numbers continue to reflect an enormous decline in enrollment experienced by the community colleges over the past two years. And remember, over 52% of our students are transfer students. So when there's a significant drop in the enrollment of the community universities, we as a university see the greatest hit, because we have the largest number of transfer students. It's not because students are not interested in the university. It's a declining enrollment, not only in the state, but nationwide. Overall, as of April 1st, just a few days, we've admitted a total of 9,638 new undergraduates for the fall of 2021. This is an increase of 18% over last year on April 1. This is also an increase of 7% over April 1, 2020, which is the pandemic year numbers. Now, to achieve this level of performance in spite of some of these external factors that MTSU and other institutions have no control over, it certainly takes a great team and many dedicated individuals. So I want to thank Dr. Deb Sales for her leadership and her staff, her admissions staff. As you all know, we hit the road, including myself and many of our faculty, and we traveled to over 14 different sites, both within the state and around three other out-of-state areas for recruiting. So we understand the challenges, and as you can see, the university still continues to draw significant interest among new freshman students and hold its own among LGIs. Mr. Chairman, trustees, you will also recall, just to talk a little bit about the R2 presentation that the provost mentioned during the committee meeting last month, that we recently earned the designation of an R2 university. This is a significant milestone event for the university, as transformational as a evolution from a normal college then to a university. And today, I've asked Dr. David Butler, he and his staff have done incredible work over the years, working with the faculty, he's the dean of our graduate school, to share very briefly with you the significance and what this means for the university and this community. Dr. Butler.
Good afternoon, Chairman Smith, Board, and President McPhee. I'm David Butler. As the president said, I actually have two titles. I'm dean of the College of Graduate Studies and vice provost for research, and so I report to this man here who reports to him, and we're going to talk about the vice provost position here. So Carnegie Classification, every three years, the Carnegie Corporation places universities into one of multiple categories. The top three categories in their classification schema are the three right there, also known as R1, R2, and R3, and those are the number of universities that fall into these categories. We as an institution, from the previous three years and for the history of our institution, have now moved from R3 up to the R2 level, which is a great accomplishment and is very significant. The criteria by which we moved are, we have to have 20 PhD doctorates between 1919 and '20, which is the data, 2019 and '20, and over $5 million in total research expenditures. So that was the year by which they looked at the data and made a determination. You'll see there on the right, that's the amount of research funding we've had going from 2010 to 2020. There's a slope right there, the line showing the increase. And on the left, you'll see that it's our faculty that are driving this change, this positive change. Over five years, 202 faculty submitted grants and contracts that got us to this level. The faculty drove this change over time. Additionally, faculty led the dissertations, the doctoral dissertations, and chaired those dissertations to get our graduates out. In the past five years, 106 faculty also participated in that. So that is what led to this change, moving from R3 to R2. If you look within the state, the LGIs, these are their rankings, and you'll notice that little bar, we are the ones, we moved, MTSU moved, and Memphis moved from R2 to an R1. And you'll see the UTK, the flagship, an R1, UT Chattanooga, R3. That's where we are within the state, with Austin P. being the R3 in the LGI system. So what does this mean? It's important for our reputation. I hear the term "R2" every day during interviews. I hear it when students are trying to come here. I hear it from faculty that are trying to get a job here. I hear it from people in the community. They're excited about this opportunity and this change. I expect higher-quality applicants for faculty positions, higher-quality applicants for graduate school, and also for undergraduate. There are many international students that would not apply to a university unless they're at a certain high level in terms of research. We will have increased with those. We will also have more partnership opportunities for grants and contracts, because we are a higher-level institution, and you want to partner with the highest-level person possible. We also will have a better review. Even though most of these reviews for grants and contracts are blind or double-blind, there is institutional bias with a higher, more likelihood of your ability able to pull it off, until we will have a better access there. We also have more access, potential access, for state and federal dollars. When we're in DC looking for research dollars, when we're on the Capitol, our research level makes a difference going after research dollars. And the last and most important part is, research can become an additional revenue arm for the university. Primarily, we are a tuition, followed by state funding formula. The third avenue, which we can grow, is in research revenue for the university. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler, and I think we all can see now why this is such an important accomplishment that will not only benefit current students, but will also be attractive as a designation for future enrollment, particularly at the graduate level. Now, I hope that many of you tuned in this past Sunday to watch the 64th Grammy, Annual Grammy Awards in Las Vegas. Out of all of the universities that have Recording Industry Program, one university has been represented and has been a part of the Grammys the last eight years. Middle Tennessee State University was well-represented, with nine alumni nominated in categories ranging from country to pop to Latin music to bluegrass to gospel. On Saturday, prior to the awards, many of our music business friends and alumni gathered for a celebration honoring one of our alumnus. She's one of the, Maria Lisa Araby, one of the industry, the music industry, top female producers and engineer, recognizing for her work on Miss Amor, nominated by the Best Latin Pop Group. I had an opportunity to visit with her and the artist. We had close to Andrew, but 30 to 40 alums who attended, many of them, again, were nominated. I think we all can be very proud of our university, as we not only see the progress on a national scale, but also the respect that this university gets nationally and internationally. And finally, I want to remind you that nearly 2,500 students, we still produce more graduates for this region than any university in the Middle Tennessee area. Each year, approximately 5,000 graduates. And certainly, we'll be having our graduation, three graduation ceremonies on Saturday, May 7. Our speakers include the Honorable Philip Edward Davis, the Prime Minister of the Bahamas, and our own Vice Chair Christine Kaboryak, and our 2021 Career Achievement recipient, Professor Tim Crave. Now, during the morning ceremony, the Prime Minister and former Tennessee Governor, you've heard earlier, Bill Haslam, will be the recipient of the honorary Doctor of Philosophy degree. You'll be receiving a little bit more details about this. I will be having a reception for the Prime Minister on Friday evening, and we will, it's an invitation, and we will certainly be sending our board members an invitation to meet the Prime Minister. Mr. Chairman and trustees, I have only one final remark, and I hope you have noticed the photographs on the monitor as we have progressed through our meeting today. We have a beautiful campus. We have dedicated faculty, staff, we have some incredible students. There's absolutely nothing we need to be ashamed about this university. We've had a number of institution, most recently, just a couple of weeks, that brought their entire administrative team to learn how MTSU is doing business. And in fact, University of Tennessee Chattanooga just finished a study a couple of months ago and pointed to MTSU as the model in attracting and retaining underrepresented group, and said they need to come to MTSU to learn, to see how we are doing it. That study was produced by the University of Tennessee Chattanooga. We are proud of our institution, and indeed, you haven't seen the best yet. Thank you so much for your great work and your support of MTSU. We'll continue to make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. In closing, I'd like to say how blown away I am by our staff and professors, the caring of trying to get one more child through the school. And that's been our only goal, or my only goal, is try to get one more through than would have if we weren't here, because it'll all go well if we get run over by a bus today. But we want to get one more, and I'm thrilled at staff and faculty, the dedication blows me away. So thank you for being here, and God bless America. Adhere.[1749.49]